Ginger must have.
Maybe.
So there are going to be four of us.
Yeah, just four.
Cream rises to the top. I left my house, like, I was on the phone with someone about a church issue and I'm like, I gotta go and I realized I left like fifteen minutes early.
Oh goodness.
I was like, I was panicked. So I was like, how long are you gonna?
Well, I kind of was the same way. I always like to leave my house at five forty. Cause you never know what's happening. But then I left at five forty-five and then I'm like, okay. And I made pretty much every bite coming here. I guess, you know. When you're early, you're early. I wish I could take my overage from today.
Exactly. Yeah. How's your summer shaping up?
Actually, pretty well. Fun stuff. I got one kid at home this summer and the other kids back and forth between here and out and she still has her apartment even after grabbed.
So she's the one, she's gonna get her master's.
She finished her master's.
Oh, she finished her.
So in two weeks, in two weeks from tomorrow, she takes the last part of the A T M.
Did you have the youngest?
Yeah. Yeah, it's my youngest. Your youngest. And we're just.
Friend of Oliver, oh, where she works?
Yeah.
He works, she works for Good Rising.
Yes, okay.
She lives in Texas, but she works at Denver. She works at a park in Toronto.
What is her specialty?
Uh, they do corporate tax, real estate.
Okay. So this daughter is Autumn, just like my husband, who's Autumn.
Well, her bad. Whatever the third, the new thing is that she didn't use.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it looks like small.
No, we were just commenting on that.
My mother said the cream rush to the top.
Yeah. Who are we kidding?
Oh, are we kidding? Right.
Wow, he's early. Look at, look at him, he's. I see already walking in. I think that's him.
We just need Joe.
Are we expecting today to be a little? I, I did notice that, but I was wondering if.
Yeah, we've seen, um, it may not be the same.
The more the merrier.
I'll say.
Did you, yeah, well. You mentioned the video, but it wasn't.
No, and then, um. I can, when it comes up.
Yeah, we'll wait until it's on the record.
And there's Joe.
Oh, this is a beautiful story.
Yeah, how are you doing? Good, good, small crowd today. Just, just the four of you. Just the four of us.
Yeah.
Pretty proud of you. How are you?
We're so soon to hear our time.
I know you're kind of throwing us off here.
Ben, what's the trouble?
Blue, you get the blue message? Well.
I see that.
But, but sure, so we can, we can.
When it's six hundred.
Then, uh, training, maybe that's all procedural training.
Okay.
All, just like stay, stay excited, stay tuned.
Okay.
Get it out of all of your, kind of, the, uh, procedures as well.
Okay.
Doing the training.
Yeah, let's head to the training and then blue it up. Let's say for waiting for every seven, we'd be here awaiting.
Yes, I'm gonna happen, right? Okay.
I would suggest, um, we put it on the agenda sort of based on the items. It would suggest flipping around, having emotions to. To get the case.
Oh, for sure.
To get the case first and then the training after. Uh, but.
Yeah, I was wondering.
For sure.
Or request a motion, so.
Okay, great.
Would you like me?
Hi, guys.
Yeah.
Hi. Good. No, I was in the beach last week, but I didn't go to Martha's Vineyard this year. No. My daughter went and gave it to me last year. So it's, it's, yeah. They go more play, they go more places than I go. Kids do.
No, I mean. We're gonna have your plan, well, that's inter-rum travel that they have. Between school, that's a problem and it's not too about.
Yeah, we also, we can't.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure.
So.
That can't be affordable.
All right, how is the, the, yeah.
Sorry. She don't. I mean, of course. No, no, it's, um, well, they have entrance.
No, no, you said you went to.
No, 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 I made, I know vacation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Getting the station wagon to go to the.
There was no airplane involved.
No, 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 no.
It's like an eight hour. In the back of the station wagon.
It's not the same as used to be. I got you. All right, it is six P M. On June sixth, twenty twenty-four, we're to commence zoning board of appeals meeting for this month. Calling this to order, roll call shows we do have a quorum, but we're missing a few individuals. But we have four of us here this evening. So we're good to go. According to the agenda, we're gonna address the minutes from May second. I was absent, but does anybody review or have any edits? Or motions?
I review them and I move to approve the minutes from the May second meeting.
Excellent.
Second.
We have a first and a second to approve minutes from the main meeting. All those in favor? All right. I have to vote today. All those opposed, no. I accept. The next time our agenda is a organizational and procedural item, however, it involves training of this board and we don't want to make the applicants sit through that. So I'm asking for a motion to defer that till the end of this meeting. Anybody wanna make a motion to that?
I make a motion that we defer the zoning board of appeals training to the end of the meeting. I second.
All right, all those in favor of deferring?
I'm.
Excellent, thanks, guys. There is no unfinished business, so I will proceed to the chairman's preamble before we start the case. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code and ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning or cannot change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. And with that, Paul, we're gonna proceed to Z B A twenty-four dash oh eight, the first and only case this evening.
Uh, good evening, Chairman. Good evening, board members. I have the pleasure to be with you all tonight, like, in, um, in short attendance on the days, in short attendance on the staff with sickness and educational plans. Um, but we persist and we move forward. Um, uh, one, one case on the agenda today, uh, twenty-seven sixty-eight West Fontainebleau Drive. Uh, Miguel and Mary Jacome request a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight, which is the stream buffer requirements to allow a deck and a spa and associated improvements to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. And this is currently existing improvements, uh, which were built without a, without a permit. And I'll go through a bit of the timeline with this specific case. Um, and for this one, we received a code enforcement complaint about unpermitted construction in September. Uh, constructors in the stream buffer, um, would have required a permit and encroaches into the stream buffer. We've issued a citation for the case. Um, case was heard, uh, by municipal court and uh, homeowner received a fine for this. Um, the second aspect to these items, as you know, is to obtain a variance after the fact. The, uh, encroachment is within twenty-five foot of the stream, so it is partly in the, in the state stream buffer as well. We've reached out to Georgia E P D on this. Uh, Georgia E P D um, considers the work exempt because it is less than a hundred square foot of encroachment into the state stream, stream buffer. And I can show you on the map sort of the, the stream buffers are a little bit, you know, they started a specific point, but the overall encroachment is less than a hundred square feet. So Georgia E P D is not responsible for this. It's an exempt project. Um, however, like that same portion still requires a city permit. And then, of course, we have a seventy-five foot stream buffer uh, to which much more of the, the work that was done, uh, is encroaching. Um, overall, the, uh, improvements that the homeowner built include a, a deck sort of that's in the rear yard behind the house. Uh, that includes a, a hot tub, a spa on there as well. Um, then it, it connects to a patio towards the side of the house with, uh, short retaining walls. The retaining walls aren't over four, aren't over four feet tall and they're not in the setbacks. So the retaining walls themselves do not require a variance. It really is only a stream buffer variance case. Overall, the, the deck is approximately thousand square feet. Um, the patio approximately twenty by twenty, so about four hundred square feet. And then you have, um, you have a walkway that connects it and steps. And that'll be visible sort of in the pictures that we have. In a moment, um, the applicant was very responsive to our requests, hired a, a surveyor for this at some point, hired a environmental person to determine where the stream buffer starts and where it ends. And that is, um, shown here, the stream buffer. So the, the stream is piped under the street, uh, where it comes out. And then there's a, a concrete flume. Where you have a concrete flume, there's no rest of vegetation. So technically, there's no stream buffers because there is no, you know, natural stream present at that point. It really sort of runs in concrete. And, um, it starts sort of at exactly that point that's shown on the presentation slide there. And the stream buffer just extends at a, a ninety degree angle from that. These are side photos that show like the wooden deck in the background. Um, there was a deck there before that was hit by a tree eventually. Um, and this, this deck replaces that. It's not the same. It's not a repair. It's a different footprint. Um, it's slightly larger. And on the left-hand side, you can see the patio on the side of the house. The stream is right behind there, within a few feet of, um, of that patio. And you can see the walkway that connects the, um, the driveway down towards that, the patio on the side of the house. And then, um, there's steps going up towards a walkway that connects you over to the deck. And then the deck can be accessed through the rear of the house. Overall, for, for this case and on this property, the stream buffers, uh, cover over a third of the backyard and they really cover the area that's, that, that includes parts of the house and, and adjacent to the house. So you cannot do any sort of typical improvements. So patio, uh, rear deck would not be allowed under, um, under the current rules, but out relief. A rear deck overall is, uh, a relatively standard improvement. The patio, uh, the same for many homeowners. And this in that neighborhood is a common feature as well. Um, most other properties in the subdivision do not have a stream buffer on there and especially not a stream buffer that takes up that much of, of the rear yard. So there, there wouldn't be any special privileges granted. And, um, overall, the, you know, denial of the variance, uh, we, we think would cause undue hardship because typical improvements couldn't be built on that property. From an environmental standpoint, because the patio is relatively close to the stream, we've been working with the applicant on, uh, coming up with a landscaping plan that provides some vegetation that can, that can filter some of the runoff, especially closer there and provide habitat for, for that creek. Um, the applicant hoped to have it ready, uh, to this meeting, but, uh, didn't succeed in, in lining up the, um, a landscaper to, to provide that right now. So we're having a, a condition to the variance proposed, uh, that addresses that. Overall, uh, we're recommending approval to the variance, um, with two conditions. One is like that needs to be in compliance with the site plan since it's constructed already. Um, that really is a aspect survey. Um, and then the second is to provide us that landscape plan within ninety days of the meeting and that, that has to be approved by the community development director. With this, uh, I conclude my presentation and the applicant this year.
Can, can I ask a quick question? Um, just on your presentation, you mentioned that there was a court case and there was a fine.
Yeah.
Um, as part of the, um, I guess the order of the court was just the final, or did they say do X, Y, Z, or anything else like that?
Um, the applicant can probably like, uh, speak a little better. To my knowledge, it was just the fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for us, Steph? Nope.
You know, I, I have one other question. Along the lines of the fine for the unpermitted work in twenty-two, is there ever a fine for an instance where a variance would have been required and it's sought after the fact like here? I know that they have, the, an applicant has to pay for, to go through the variance process, but is there also a fine if they're doing it kind of in retro, retroactive?
Yeah, any, any fees for work that is started prior to obtaining a permit, uh, gets charged double permit fees.
Yep. Good question. Yep, thank you. All right. Would the applicant care to approach and, uh, explain your application to the board? Yeah, just, uh, accept the podium and state your name and address, please. We know it, but we have to have it for the record.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, yeah, my name is Miguel Jacome. Uh, I live, I am a Dumbody resident for a little bit over thirty years. Um, at, uh, same house, twenty-seven sixty-eight West Fontainebleau Drive. Um, there is where my kids have grown up and of course, in the meantime, my, are gone. So i- it is my wife and me that, uh, live at that residence. Um, the deck that we have right now, as Paul mentioned it, um, it was saying, um, something that we did after in all basic tech was hit by a tree. Um, in the neighborhood. And at that point, um, we decided to make something nicer. And especially because, um, my wife, um, my wife had an accident, uh, thousand eleven, then of two thousand eleven. Uh, and she suffered, um, uh, well, she has problems with her back that didn't, didn't, didn't cure basically because she's still with, uh, she needs the, the wheelchair to move. So at that point, we decided to see if, uh, it would make sense to, to do in a spa. Uh, we, we didn't have that in plan. We just wanted to have the, the deck built. And, uh, yeah, we started to, to call around and, you know, we, we got some money from insurance because our old, um, old deck was destroyed, but it was not much. We, 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 as I said, we did not upgrade. So the money was short for, for doing the spa. However, we, we accomplished that. Uh, my wife's doctor also thought that is a, an excellent idea. And, uh, yeah, we did that. And, um, we, we called around and, uh, we, we found a company that, uh, can do that. Prices were, were okay. And, uh, I didn't think much more about that. And that is where all my, my sins come up. Uh, regarding, uh, permits and, uh, and whatever paperwork I needed to do, uh, in the city. At some point, I, I believe I not consciously, maybe I trust, trust that that is something that the contractor does. I was totally wrong. And, um, and that is how things develop. So in summer twenty twenty-two, around twenty twenty-two, around summer, let's say, uh, we finished, we finished that. And, um, yeah, very much, um, uh, after that, uh, eh, late last year, September round, we decided also to do on our, on the side of the house, close to the creek, uh, to upgrade the, the little patio that we have there. And, uh, but that was something where, you know, I, in my mind from that I have heard around from friends as long as I am a good distance from, good distance was for me, ten feet, that is the figure that I remember shaking on the. Uh, I said, uh, we can do it. Uh, again, all the sins came up again of, uh, not soliciting or not, not filing for any, any, any permit. Uh, I have in fortune that, uh, that the variance with respect to the twenty, to the twenty-five feet is stream buffer. Um, I mean, that we, I didn't have to file that because, uh, basically, uh, I, I am under a certain limit that allowed me to proceed with that. However, on the seventy-five stream buffer, as you know, uh, as you probably have seen on the, on the maps, uh, my, my, almost my entire house is over it. And, uh, so and with that, the entire, I can say that hundred percent of the, of the deck, including the spa, is on it. So, and here, that is why come my request for a, for a variance, um, um, part because, um, well, recognizing that, uh, not having follow what I needed to follow to comply uh, to the correct filing and also, um, see if the variance can also, uh, be allowed, uh, due to the, through my wife's conditions. That's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here wanna speak in favor? I think we have one card, right? And this gentleman wants to speak. Kurt, would you like to, uh, come address the podium? Thank you. Yeah, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Kurt Beer, two seven four two West Fontainebleau. Three doors up the street from him. Uh, the reason I'm here is I am against what's going on. I've been here since nineteen sixty-nine and the city of Dunwoody tax paying citizens since eighty-three. Um, nothing against you. This has nothing to do personally with you, but, um, a lot of work was being done. There was no permit. They were working on Sundays for over better part of a few months, working on Sundays. They're not supposed to do that. I looked down and saw, hang on for a second. Are you guys able to see his property, his actual property?
I don't know if we have an image of it, like an aerial bit?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I, I, my point here is his backyard is frigging huge. All right, massive. And, um, I'm a big nature person and it hurts my feelings that the creek is being imposed on. It hurts my feelings that the city of Dunwoody is okay with taking a check. Um, because somebody didn't go through the proper channels to get their permits. I've been permitted twice in my home to have work done and it astounds me that anybody going to the lengths of work that was being performed here was unpermitted. And my personal feeling is that you would have to find somebody really willing to, to do that. Somebody could not be doing that much work and realize that, um, we don't have a permit. It just does not make sense to me. Um, second of all, this is encroaching on the neighbor across the creek, not just the buffer of the creek, but now he's moving closer to the other home across the creek. So we've got that going on as well. And, uh, just as far as the fine goes, I don't know how much the fine was, but the city of Dunwoody shouldn't get that money. The people that got mailed these flyers that live within five hundred feet of this man's property should get the money. If indeed, um, he is allowed to keep his structure, um, it would be in my eyes, the people that should get the money. I know this sounds crazy, but I mean, paying a fine and the city of Dunwoody gets the money? It should be the people that live close to this that's happening that gets the money and divvies it up if that's the way it's gonna go. Again, nothing personal against you, but, um, so many things went wrong with this. I'm the person that called. Um, if you could look at his property again, the length of the creek had dirt piled up on it, three hundred feet, I would imagine, two hundred feet, something along those lines, dirt, raw dirt. No silt fence, no anything. I'm a huge fan of the Chattahoochee River. I fish there weekly. This creek within minutes runs into the Chattahoochee River and so many things wrong. And shame on Dunwoody if you're willing to take a check for it. My name's Kurt Bear and thank you for your time.
Thank you. No other comments, uh, Paul? Doesn't look like there's nobody else here. All right.
No other comments.
Thank you. So we'll close it to public comment and open up to board comment and questions.
Oh, I, can I still? Um, so for the city, um, the Mr. Beer, the one that spoke in opposition, he said that it approaches across the creek to the neighbors. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, we, we talked with the neighbor, um, the adjacent neighbor, uh, we, we talked with them, um, because they had questions about what this entails here and they, um, decided not, not to make a comment one way or, or the other. So the, it, it really is, it's not terribly close. I mean, it's farther away. It's the ten-foot setback exists to the, to the neighbor, to the sign. The patio is not closer than, than that. So you still have your typical setback. That's still, even with the patio, that's still in place to the adjacent property. So it's not. It's not.
No, you can't.
If you're able to keep this, I beg you not to drain it if it needs to be drained. Don't drain it into that creek. It needs to be properly dry. That. Understand? That's a fluorinated tub next to a creek. Uh, if you ever have, you have a question?
Yes, I did. Um, yeah, so it's not, the, the neighbor did not say that it was on his property or that it, or that, or it bothered them.
It's not, it's not, it's not on the property. It's not close to property. There's no, it's, it's very much on his property and, um, there's no allegations of that.
Okay, thank you. I have questions for the, for the applicant, but if someone else has a question for the city, go ahead. Do you have a question for the city? Go ahead.
Can you give us an idea of the square footage? Do, are we looking at a situation where the impervious surface is going over a threshold?
Let me pull it up real quick and, and share the screen again. Um, so this shows it pretty well. It's a very deep lot. Um, so the lot coverage is approximately twenty percent. So we're not getting close to it from a lot. So the lot coverage is approximately twenty percent. So we're not getting close to it from a lot coverage standpoint. The patio is approximately twenty by twenty. That's approximately four hundred square feet. Uh, the entire, the deck and the spa and the entire structure, it's sort of a bit on on a couple of different levels. Approximately a thousand square feet plus um, an amount for the walkways, but the walkways are just, you know, so probably about fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet in total.
And it looked from the pictures that there's no covering over the deck. It's a like a lattice work. So that wouldn't be considered impervious surface, correct?
No, I mean, so we would consider, so these decks, there's nothing can grow underneath. Like even if there's no concrete surface underneath, it doesn't work from an environmental standpoint the same way that a a grass surface would work. So we would consider a a deck as impervious surface, but not to the same level as as concrete, yeah.
Okay.
So um, in our packet, there was a letter, but I don't think it was from that individual that was just here. It was from someone else. And that individual mentioned a video because his his or her concern, I can't remember the gender, was about water flow. Did you find that to be credible? And would, does this, and if so, did this impact the waterfall? Cause it looks to me like this stream is in an odd place, comes under the ground through a pipe that no one can see it until it comes out of the pipe. And I think that pipe is right where that blue word stream is, is I couldn't figure out where the pipe was.
Yeah, there's.
So speak to that place.
It comes right out there, like the, the comment that was made, um, it's a gentleman that has, is working with our public works department for um, a series of time now. Has legitimate, has legitimate kind of stormwater issues. This doesn't impact him. He's really fifteen feet further up. So this, uh, Mr. Jacob's property doesn't drain towards his property. So I think he's more referencing the overall concept of it.
Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't want to ignore this if he was downstream. So thank you.
Yeah, I I have questions for the applicant. How are you? Um, yeah, so I'll go back to my first question. And and the reason I ask the question is I just don't want to go against any court order and I want to be in line with that. And is it my assumption that they, the court said pay X fine and that was it?
I mean, I have to follow a a certain number of steps um, to verify that. Uh, for example, in the first case with a patio, that what I have done, I mean, let's forget for a moment that I didn't have a permit, but what I have done is still is in the frame of what is allowed based on this hundred feet exception. When we went back and forth with the, with the, how do you call it, the surveyor and made the measurement that came, I mean, that was not a measure for me or my, it was an official measurement. They came to exactly one hundred square feet. And and that apparently is the number that allowed me to. So in that case, I I pay, I will get fined for that. Uh, and and that was it. In in this case, in this case of the, with the seventy five, it, uh, I mean, I have to find out against the measurements and see where, where, uh, where can I, uh, where can, it make possible that this, eh, eh, files for a variance, eh, based on the fact that basically the entire house is over the steam buffer. I mean, to begin with, if um, if the house had to be built, it had to be issued a variance to build.
Yeah, right, right. I I understand. Yeah, so it.
It's, I understand your question now better, like I didn't understand it at first. There are cases where the court will not allow, will require like improvement to be torn down. Uh, this did not happen here. So there there are certain conditions. I mean, uh, there's a probation set kind of like this. There's a certain other condition, but this was, you paid us fine and then you may apply to to maintain the improvements.
Perfect. Thank you. That that's, that's exactly what I want.
Okay, good.
Okay, so with that in mind, the other questions are, I think easier. No, I have more. So the deck that you had before, okay, was it, I know it was a little bit different than, well, let me start by this. You had a deck and through no cause of yours, the deck was destroyed. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so then you sought to replace the deck with the new deck, with a little, a little bit of improvement, right? Okay, is it, was that deck a lot smaller than this deck or how much more space is this deck than the other? Approximately, don't kill yourself now.
No, yeah. The spa increased the 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 area of the deck. It was, without the spa, I would say it was twenty percent more than the previous.
Okay, okay.
Without the spa.
Okay, and um, and you, 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 so, and this was done by a company for you, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, and and you you paid them and they did the work?
Correct. I didn't do any, I didn't put any name.
Okay, and and it's your understanding from what I'm gathering from your presentation that you believe that if any permit were to be gotten, that they would have gotten it for you?
That it will tell me at least that they cannot start without that.
And they did not tell you?
That that doesn't happen. That didn't happen.
All right, okay, okay. Look, I kind of wrote my questions all over, so I gotta. And someone mentioned that there's no natural stream around that point, like, correct? Yes.
I think I made it a bit more complex than than it needed to be. Like, so from the, from the street, under the street, so there's a culvert underneath and then it is, can can you see my mouse?
Oh, yes, I can, I can, I can.
So it's piped from here to this point here. It's completely piped and then there's a head wall there. So the water comes out of the pipe and runs on the surface. This little kind of like, this white box here is sort of a concrete flume, because you tend to have, if water comes out of a pipe, that tends to have pretty erusive capacities because it's really channelized at that point. So it's often is kind of like some kind of a concrete flume or some kind of riprap or some fortification there. So there really isn't sort of a natural stream around. It happens sort of a few feet further, which is like this line here. In this case, that really mattered. Often that doesn't really matter. In this case, it did because then the improvement was under a hundred square feet for the state. So they had it surveyed to the exact point. The survey has confirmed this. It's credible. We've walked it. We agree with it. Um, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
And can I interrupt to ask about this particular area? So the patio, is there any portion of the patio that's in the seventy five foot stream buffer, or I should say the fifty feet beyond the state twenty five? I I can't tell from here.
Yeah, the, I think, a tiny little bit, yes. But it's like the, the way, like, we have two stream buffers. One is a twenty five foot stream buffer that the state has and then we have entirely separate, but different rules too. We have a seventy five foot stream buffer that applies sort of, it's not, sometimes people think it's from the twenty five foot to the seventy five foot line, but it really is an entirely separate seventy five foot buffer.
But it's not seventy five feet beyond the twenty five foot. It's that from the stream to seventy five feet out. The city of Dunwoody has rules for that.
Correct, yeah.
But she, but in this case, because the state has kind of waived any guideline or because the, uh, square footage is so small, it's under their threshold, they're not requiring anything, so.
We would have put you guys in the exact same situation, no matter what the state would have decided. It's just that the state has the option to also enforce their twenty five foot stream buffer.
Okay, but the the deck and the spa, though neither of those is in the twenty five foot?
Correct.
Okay. And can you show us with your mouse? I'm just really confused on where the stream is going. So I see where this, I see where it comes out of that pipe.
Yeah, it leaves, it leaves the property that flows generally towards the northeast. So it's really not on Mr. Jacob's property for a a long while. It it flows over on the neighbor's property, but the the stream buffers, of course, they apply irrespective of property lines.
Right, that's, I'm just trying to figure out where is it going?
So it's like if you think yourself kind of parallel of this line seventy five feet down.
Okay.
So it goes approximately like, like.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
So I, as far as landscaping, what what are you guys are thinking as far as, what would be something acceptable, what are you thinking?
It it'll probably be in this case, it'll be a combination of grasses and small shrubs. And that's overall what it does. It's like then you have um, plants there that can withstand the the conditions sort of with more with a higher water level in in the soil and the roots kind of stabilize the entire area. And then you have surface runoff that gets filtered a little bit. That that's the realistic solution for this.
And around that area, are there similar houses with similar decks and or spas?
Uh, I mean, there's some that have pools, that there are some that have, um, yeah, all forms of um, decks, patios. Um, it's like, it's, it's like a pretty typical, it's up like a Happy Hollow and Dunwoody Club. So it's not like the enabled with the smallest houses in the city.
Got you, got you, got you. Yeah, so, but 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 because he has basically no room him to do anything like that.
Yeah, he couldn't, like, he doesn't have space to the side of his house. He doesn't have space to the rear of his house where he could do it without obtaining a variance.
Okay, I'm fine. I guess he does understand now that if this gets granted, that no work without permit.
It's amazing that these, that we see it every month. These contractors, I didn't think about it. You know, it's not your, it's not really your responsibility, right?
And and you'll see, you'll very soon see much worse than this, just like to, like, stay, stay tuned. But we're we're working right now on a um, on an awareness campaign for the stream buffer, like what permitting is required. Because we have too many cases like this, so we're trying to put it out there, create a bit more awareness, but yeah, that, stay tuned.
So on that note, with a spa or a pool, if if a homeowner had a pool in a backyard that was not in the stream buffer, but the stream buffer still was on their property, what kind of guidelines do we have for drainage? Because what the commenter said after he was. What, what guidelines, is that something that should be included in here that there has to be a?
This is relatively far away too, like the spa is at the other end of the stream buffer too. It's not, what we want is like, we want this to surface run. So to, for it to be drained, not like piped directly into the creek, but we wanted to surface run uh, across the grass or like across the landscape. And um, that overall is from a environmental standpoint, that that isn't yeah, a terribly, a terribly big deal.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I wish the city could um, find the contractor. I'd stop doing it if we could find him, but that's just a comment. That's a board comment for later.
I'm gonna put that in same word comment.
And so we're always trying that, that that's always our first instinct is to go after the contractor. Often, it's not as easy to identify sort of like the the contractor. Sometimes it's not a contractor, it's not a licensed professional, but it's someone and then then we go after the homeowner.
Now, no more questions?
No.
Uh, I really didn't have any. You guys asked the same ones. I mean, it's gonna be variance regardless of the size. It's a pretty big scope, right? But it it's really relevant. You're gonna need a variance regardless of the scope. And your question was kind of well taken. I mean, Paul's explaining it as almost non-pervious, but or, but it is, but when it's elevated like that, I mean, they have slats, the water's running through it. It's not quite like having a covered structure or even a, you know, concrete floor below it, you know, so I, I, yeah, it's um, to me, yeah, yeah, and and impervious percentages, yeah.
Somewhere else in the yard, how's she gonna get to it?
Through the ramping and all that.
Yeah, I, for him, you know, I look like, listen, nobody's giving us anything showing otherwise that it was intentional. Hey, listen, somebody else did it for him. The other thing is that he had a deck before. It's not like he didn't have a deck before. And so he's replacing the deck in essence. Yeah, you're supposed to get it. That would destroy it, right? Right, so we call this up his intent, whether it's that, but.
Exponentially bigger.
Right, so that's that's true, but but even though I doubt that whatever the size the deck was, that it didn't infringe on that seventy five. Because of where the house is.
Oh, no, it didn't matter what he put there.
Yeah, it didn't, yeah. So that's why I don't look at the size that much. I'm like, eh, no matter what they say. Unless we have a problem, the only thing is if we as a board have a problem on the size of it now, otherwise.
Really matter, because it's still in this stream buffer, just like.
That's true. It doesn't matter, you know.
But again, if it was, you know, covered or had a lot of concrete underneath it, um, you know, we might have different issues.
Yeah, because I listened to the opposition, you know, the guy, you know, even though little brash, but you know, I li- I listened to it, to him, but she could, if he, no matter what, he 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 has a right to have a deck anyway, like everybody else.
Right, right. As a citizen, he did the right thing because he saw construction in the stream buffer. So he did the right thing by calling the city. I mean, he's the one, he admitted.
That's true.
So that was good because then sort of everything can get right. So then we can have vegetation planted and we can do some remediation and honor the stream buffer, which is what seems to be all Dunwoody. So, but the deck, I think if it had come before us as the the tear down and rebuild, I think we would have looked at the size of his lot and said, percentage wise, you're doing an improvement to your home. You're not infringing on your neighbor behind, no side.
And no, nobody complained on the sides. This guy has three houses now.
Correct, correct. So anyway, all that to say.
And the other thing I have to say, just for the opposite, it's nice to have people that care, you know? He seemed to naturally care about the, the, the environment passionately, you know, which is, which is nice.
Okay.
And there's nothing we can do at this point of how the lack of a silt fence. I would have expected, and I don't know if the city got involved at that point, but that's not.
Yeah, if they would have come for the variance, if ahead of time we were requesting a silt fence and all that, it's moot now. Permit, yes, or a permit. Um, all right, do I have a, do I have a motion or you got a question?
I just want to, before anyone makes a motion, so the recommendation in here is to have a landscape plan about within nine days of the approval, obviously subject to the approval of the community development director. So I is there any reason to extend that to a hundred twenty days or?
No.
Well, I think the applicant's working on it. I think it was supposed to be ready tonight. Is that sort of the understanding? I think that's the understanding from Paul, from the city. So I think ninety days seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Because they knew about it. If it had been, they just found out tonight, I could see where we nice.
Three months, it's probably.
All right.
Yes.
I I'm gonna make a motion. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy eight, to allow a deck and spa and associated improvements to encroach into the seventy five foot stream buffer with the following conditions. Number one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Delta Surveyors Incorporated dated eleven thirty twenty twenty three, C appendix A. Number two, the applicant shall provide a landscaping plan for native plants within the seventy five foot foot stream buffer. The landscape plan must be provided within ninety days of approval of this variance and is subject to the approval of the community development director.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, a motion and a second for approval of the variance, all those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's approved, thank you, sir. Uh, we moved this uh organizational item to the end, so other business before that? Nope, good, public comment, uh, board comment, I would like to say, I don't know, he's there, I I agree with you, we have to go, I mean. This, oh, caveat emptor, we see pools put in, all kinds of stuff, so Paul, my board comment is same as we had, I mean, Claire was saying a minute ago. I don't know what the, we've seen pools being constructed, we see all kinds of things going up without any kind of permits, I mean. I, you're right, a lot of them aren't even licensed, they're irreplicable, but maybe this guy was cheap and wasn't licensed, I don't know, but regardless. What's the recourse, and is there a way to make, ensure that that uh, we don't see these every, you know, every month, these guys just. Going in and do this work without getting a permit, I mean, that would seem like job one, does the city enforce that, don't they?
We're but we're trying, so that we've made some changes, like, because this is the biggest frustration to us, like, because. So often we don't have input on the design, um, we don't have input on the design and then. We create erosion control issues, like like this case, um. Sort of had the complaint been made during the construction, we would have come out, we would have enforced sort of like the 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 silt fencing requirement, for instance. But we don't have any input, if if people don't let us know, we don't get plans with the erosion control. We don't do a pre-application, our pre-construction meeting, um, we started with these more um. Sort of site project, like pool contractors are pretty bad with that too. Um, but we we started a mandatory pre-construction meeting on site. Where uh, our engineer goes out and then hands them over the permit in person to make sure that this doesn't start, um. We'll have a meeting set up for next week with our communication staff to do um, sort of public service announcement about. About this issue, at at the end of the day, like, there's always going to be N amount of people who. Um, just don't know, that that's that's will never reach a hundred percent, um, that homeowners will always have a hard time. Opening a a four hundred page codebook sort of and and figuring out what exactly is required. Um, so we feel a bit more lenient with with homeowners, um, with contractors, a different story, because then it tends to be either. Not wanting to spend the time on designing, it's often not even the the pulling a permit, that's the big problem, off permits aren't that expensive. For smaller projects. But it is that often if you do environmental work, we ask for input from a design professional. And which the contractors do not have on staff, so they're avoiding this problem entirely, um, and then in some cases is what. What a homeowner understands to be a contractor is often not a licensed contractor. It's often not someone who has state license to do contracting work, it's often a handyman or like um. Of a group of the boys, pretty much, and so that, yeah, it's it's challenging.
And I guess, and I guess in their step, sorry, I guess in his standpoint, he, all he can do is, maybe if he hadn't paid him yet, deduct the. The fine or something like that from the guy, or try to get the homeowner as, coming on them to get the money back, or. Deducted from his, what he owes the guy or whatever, I suppose, but, yeah, I was just curious how that, how that worked, because we see it a lot, and it just seems like there's a little bit of a. Wild West, it's gonna continue as people continue the infill and the improvements and so forth, yeah.
Uh, concerned nearby resident, like the gentleman who spoke against this. How how can residents verify if a project is permitted? Or if it's not, that they have to display something?
So they don't have to display something, so like a permit card needs to be present on site, but it doesn't have to be. Displayed, so often there's the permit box that you see, that's that's not actually a requirement, that's often the most convenient way. If um, if the homeowner isn't at home, but like that, it's not a requirement to have it uh, there, we have a. Online permitting system, uh, people, like everybody can can check for themselves. Uh, if there is a permit issued, um, awareness probably isn't super high about it, um. And then we often get phone calls, I mean, the 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 way this comes to us is just, we get a phone call, it doesn't matter who you call at the city. It always makes its way to to the right person, but um, that's the best way to do it, just like to. To call it in, something is happening, if there's a permit, you know, we'll just say that on the phone and then. Um, no, no harm is done, but, um, yeah.
Okay, I think we're down to the uh organizational procedural items, which is our training. We don't need to adjourn the meeting first, right, we adjourn it afterwards, since it's a.
Let's do it as part of the meeting, yeah, because it's technically on the agenda.
Yes, yeah, that's my understanding as well, okay.
Yeah, and this is, um, there there is a city requirement for mandatory training. We've done in the past, you know, we've done a bunch of different things, I think, um, Alan, I think you, when you were on boarded. We did a one-on-one, we started instituting that, um, we did for for planning commission, where the cases are a bit more. Um, or can be more sort of complex, we we did, uh, we offered one-on-one briefings. Which we offer for you, like anytime to, anytime you all have questions, just give us a call, um, which some of you do from time to time, um. There is budget two for uh, ARC or state sponsored training. That tends to be um, either like it's four days, I think it's the ARC training, some of you have done it. Uh, I think in the past too, and and then there's uh, Georgia State Training, those are always available. If if you think that that would be a good fit for you, let us know. Um, it's just always hard, because it's during daytime on on weekdays.
Yeah.
It is a hard thing to combine with a day job. So what what we're doing in addition to this now is to do probably like an annual training on the basics. Um, the first one, we'll just go through. And then what I would ask you to do is a bit of pondering, kind of what items you guys would be interested uh, at, and then. Feel free, but small enough group to just like ask questions at any point, um, or ask them at the end. Printed out as part of the, in your file, I printed out the organizational procedural items too. Uh, this is specifically for zoning board of appeals that were approved, or like um, adopted by by your predecessors. Um, just like read through them at some point, um.
Oh boy, my buddy Richard, try to throw me off the board all the time, I miss, I miss a class.
Then I I took over the 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 training sort of the last minute, so I sort of know what's on the slides. So I'll fill it in with what comes to mind for me, but.
Where are y'all?
So be be patient with me, but but ask any questions you may have, um, if you can't answer it now, we can bring it to the next meeting. So a few kind of uh, items in no specific order, but just to go through. Uh, first open records, um, Georgia is a pretty open state, Georgia has pretty stringent sunshine laws. That uh, most of what's happening in the government is available to the public. In Dunwoody, we're trying to be more available, and we're trying to uh, be a step ahead of the the legal requirements too. Um, generally, all um, all. Records are are open for for the public to access, and a record is. Uh, anything that's that's prepared, maintained, received by an agency. Or by a private entity on behalf of that agency, so we have a contracting model for our staff, um, they are. City staff, but are hired by a private company, that company is just as much. Affected by this than uh, a staff like a a city employee is. So this is um, this includes communications, so anything that's an email, anything that's a text message. Technically, anything that is uh, a note someone makes for a phone call for, let's say, like someone has. A notepad that uses that, that is a governmental record too. Uh, anything that y'all are doing here, you know, we're videoing everything, um, everything gets posted on YouTube a day after the meeting. So if you want to send it to, you know, your your loved ones, or if you wanna brag about the important work that's. That's happening here, like you can share the YouTube link. Yep, that they are sort of like a a record sort of, that the phone call is received, if someone pulls all the calls. Um, that 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 is a, that is a record too, yeah.
But the conversation itself is not reported?
The conversation is not, yeah, but like a voicemail, for instance, is, and the voicemail could be, um, it would be a governmental record. Um, the way we provide this is through open records requests, and an open records request can be made in. In all sorts of forms, like we have a form on the website that someone can fill out and submit it, we have at the receptionist desk, she has. Many, many kind of uh, of those forms there that people can fill out right there, the most common one for the public is just a. Police report, you know, just to access their police reports, but it also is someone sends me an email, uh. Send me all the documentation on this, then I forward it to the city clerk's office, and that becomes a open records request as well, um. This gets all coordinated through the city clerk's office, and um, and I think they're doing a great job with it, um. The, we're responsive to every request within three business days, um, and we may ask for more time. The vast majority of them fulfilling in in those three business days. Um, and then down here, it's like, it's not just like, don't think of it just as documents too. Because sort of all, everything you're doing here is on the record as well, um, and. So, even though incidental conversation unrelated to the business of an agency does not trigger the act's requirements, so if. If I'm talking to an applicant, that's not inherently a governmental record. But then if y'all are at a forum, let's say before the meeting, talking about, talking about a case that technically is. That technically is a governmental record. Um, so that's why we would encourage you to not in in the setting that y'all are sort of like as as four of you. Just like talk about, and the better form is to just like not talk about the case sort of outside of, um. Outside of the meeting, and this this doesn't mean that you can't talk with your. Uh, family sort of about a case, this doesn't mean that you, but that if you. In in a configuration of board members are talking about the case, that's already has a bit of an appearance of, uh, that that should be done on the record. Any questions about the governmental records? Um, forum, and I had mentioned that before, um, the forum is what we have to have. To do a zoning board of appeals meeting, uh, we need at least four people to be here at any point in time. If, let's say, throughout this meeting, we just had the four people here, someone would have had to leave early, that ends the meeting, so. We we cannot come, we cannot do a meeting with with less than four people present, so that's that's the magic number for that. Um, if there is not a forum present, which happens, happens occasionally, very rarely, um. That we don't have enough people there at the beginning of the meeting, the meeting doesn't start, so we'll wait until the fourth person comes in. We'll start the meeting at that point, um, it's no major, you know, it's not, it's not, there's no, you know, major. Process to it, we just wait, um, supposed to wait thirty minutes, um, but what we'll do, that's what we ask. For attendance, um, if we know we're not gonna have a forum, we'll cancel the meeting. Then saves the people that would come, saves people the trip, saves people um, who wanna speak on the record, uh, saves them the trip. Um, and then we'll re-advertise it. Any questions about this?
Technically, if we had a forum at a meeting, but. A board member needed to recuse herself for a particular case. That left us without a forum.
Yeah.
We couldn't hear that case.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Really random scenario, but.
Yeah, that's why we're really strict about who can recuse themselves, I think we had this at some point where a board member.
I think, yeah, recently, right?
Yeah, because of a.
They knew somebody that.
Relationship, but like, I'll I'll come to that in a second, because I I wanna uh, bring that up too, but. Um, people recuse themselves sort of too much based on on state laws, pretty much. Presiding officer, um, there always is one, you know, we, you guys have uh, voted for Joe. Um, and and Alan sort of, as as the two um, people in charge who are taking this this duty on. Um, if if neither Joe nor Alan can make it to a meeting, there'll be a vote. Uh, who will be the presiding officer, there always has to be someone, will always place him in the middle there, so it's clear to. It's clear to members who are, or to to community members who are attending, that like, there's always someone in charge of the meeting. If if the chairman leaves the meeting, the vice chairman takes over, if the vice chairman leaves the meeting. Subsequently, there's a vote for a new presiding officer. Um, there's a a third role that's anticipated by the rules and procedures, that's the secretary. Um, and you'll, you'll, um, remember that neither one of you is elected as secretary, that's because that's the staff. So secretary of the zoning board of appeals is technically Richard MacLeod, who is the community development director. He acts as the secretary, and that includes his entire staff. So in this case, you know, I would be, I would be the one taking over those roles, or like, you know, it's a practice distributed. But the secretary of the zoning board of appeals is the staff. Um, at the bottom here, you'll find something that I don't think we've done consistently in the past so many years. The terms for chair and vice chair are by the rules and procedures two years. So, um, should should no one have major concerns about this, um. There there wouldn't be an election at the beginning of twenty twenty five, because we're just halfway through the two-year term. You didn't think you were signing up to that, right? Yeah, then. Yeah, for for meetings overall, um, you'll, you do, you also notice that you guys don't set your own meeting dates. Um, you guys just come um, to the meeting dates that are scheduled by the city council. And the way it happens is that the city council towards the end of every year. Um, sets the meeting schedule for the subsequent year or for the, uh, for the, for the next year. So the twenty twenty five meeting schedule will be set probably in uh, August or September. The zoning board appears tends to be um, the first Thursday of every month, unless that is a holiday, then it gets pushed to the. To the week after, makes it easy for everybody, you know, because we have certain advertising requirements for the meetings, we have certain application deadlines. So if it's always the same, then we can plan those out for us, like we create our. Um, our zoning board appears variance case. Scheduled based on the city council, so the moment the city council approves the schedule or finalizes it, then we get added and we determine. Uh, when something needs to be advertised, when something needs to be submitted, what's the last time, you know, we typically have about a week. Where people can make changes to their application, uh, at some point that time passes, so that that's always that. Set by the city council. Yep. Yep, it's it's the week after, yeah. Yeah, and the the same is true for the, uh, for the room, you know, it's always here, uh, this is the meeting location. If it is a different location, we'll have to go through steps to to re-advertise it for the new location. Um, what we also do with this is we'll send this as soon as it's approved, we'll send it to the press, we'll send it to. We'll put it on the website to make sure that everybody knows about these, about these meetings, um. We also um, put, we have outside of the the meeting chambers here, you'll see that little cabinet. Um, check it on on the way out, kind of like, uh, typically a week before the meeting, we'll put in the agenda there too, so if, uh. You know, if someone comes by city hall, they can see the meetings that are happening in the next week and can see what's on the agenda. Which is sort of like the historic, you know, the the historic requirement for these meetings that it needs to be posted a day before. We typically do it a week before to make sure that you guys can prepare, that applicants can prepare, um, that that people know about this. Yeah, yeah, that 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 it is, yeah, so we try to to make it available seven days before every meeting. I think we've been successfully doing that in in the last years, there are times. When we cannot, like in that sort of software auditors. Um, but we're working really hard sort of as the staff to make sure that we consistently meet this. Um, to allow you guys to uh prepare for these cases and to have all the documents out there for the public. Sort of for both the applicants so that they can prepare for this based on the staff presentation, but also for any. One who wishes to speak sort of in support or opposition, to make sure that they have the staff report as a basis. Uh, to help them make sense of the case, goes like we have the. The advertising before, we have a sign on the property, we have mailers to everybody within proximity of. Of a case, uh, we have it in the crier, we also have it on the website, so people who, um. Who want to pull up the application materials, they're generally posted about a month early on the website, uh. To make sure that people know what's what's going on. Um, again, like the requirement that we have by the state is twenty four hours prior to the meeting, uh, but we're trying to do it. A week before the meeting. Um, agenda is, uh, again, like the, the different, uh. The different groupings on your agenda, they're part of the organizational procedural items. So the order of these is set for every meeting, but you can change the order of, um. Of items, you can add items to it as well, if you wish to speak about something, you'll have to vote on it, that's that's the only thing. So the zoning board of appeals can add items, zoning board of appeals can technically also eliminate items, um. We'd ask you not to do that with our cases, because you know, they're fundamentally the reason why why everybody's here. Um, but the zoning board of appeals is an independent board, um. Now, any any questions about this? And then voting overall, um, again, we need a quorum for any action to be taken. Requires a quorum and we need a majority vote for uh for every action to be taken. So if it's just the four of you, uh, we need three people for any motion to pass. If it's a tight vote, the motion fails, so we need a, um, we need a. Someone to make a motion, we need someone to second it, if a motion is made and seconded, the motion needs to be voted on. So the motion can fail, so if 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 it's a tight vote or like if the motion is voted down, the motion fails. Then it's back to the floor, um, this can be a frustrating endeavor, you know, if you guys are legitimately deadlocked. You know, two people feel strongly that something gets approved, two people feel strongly that something gets denied. It's sort of tricky, we we would ask you all to discuss more, try to find a different point of view. Like all of this, at the end of the day, we need some motion to pass. In a few select instances, the right call is a deferral. We'd ask you not to use a deferral to avoid making a decision, so that because. We we ask you to do a deferral if you have additional information that is provided that helps with the decision making, um. If that's not the case, then we would ask you guys to discuss more, um. Ask additional questions, that that is one of the hard aspects of of being on the zoning board of appeals. But it is a a necessary, uh, duty, sort of like the the show must go on, like these people sort of deserve to know. What happens with their their projects. Yes, yeah, that that's why it's set to seven people originally, yeah, that that's why those are always, um. No. Yeah. Yeah, that 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 can happen, it's it's really easy, kind of like, it's like the whole Roberts Rules, kind of like, uh. Book, uh, it's really easy, kind of like to, um. There's there's numerous, there's pages of a page is kind of what what can happen to a motion, what can't happen to a motion. Um, yeah, motion can be withdrawn, emotion can be amended, at the end of the day, what you all are doing. Um, is, um, somewhat narrow, right? You you all either approve a variance, approve it conditionally or deny the variance, um. This sort of adds the possibility of. Us misunderstanding or y'all just like getting caught up sort of in exactly what's going on, if us keeping everything straight, so. The cleaner way is, um, either. You know, to discuss before the motion or just to vote on the motion eventually and vote it down or, um, and then make a new motion. Then overall at the bottom here, um, I I wanted to bring it up again, um. Like the zoning board appeals tends not to be the place sort of to become popular in the neighborhood, just because. Because there will be, you know, it's a small town, at the end of the day. You guys were chosen because you all are known in the community in some way, shape or form. Um, you guys have been living here for for many years, you know, it it'll happen from time to time that someone comes. That you know, that on its own is not a reason to to not vote on a case, um. Conflict of interest is more or less that, uh, like a personal financial interest. So if it is an immediate family member, if it is, um. You know, a project, if it's a commercial project, let's say, and you have partial ownership, um. For the attorneys amongst you, if it's sort of a case or like if it's a client that you represent, if it's. Um, if for the design professionals, if it is, if you're the architect of it, you shouldn't vote on it. Because you have this financial interest, those are examples, kind of for when you should recuse yourself. Um, a friendship is not sufficient, so we would ask you to to vote for, um. For exactly the reasons before, it gets hard, like the the less people you have. The less of a different viewpoint you have and the harder the the actual voting tends to get. What we would like you to do, uh, it doesn't say specifically the cleanest way. If you accuse yourself is to leave the room, make it known. Before the case starts, let the chairman know, ideally kind of let him know before the meeting. So they know what to expect, um, let us know to, um, leave the room, just like wait outside, um. So. If you accuse yourself, then we really don't want you to sort of stay on the days kind of. And then look approvingly or look, um, you know, the the cleanest way is to leave the room, wait outside and then. Once the the specific item is over, then we'll we'll get you and we'll we'll take you back in. Yeah, and that's sort of the the best way, if we know about it, then, you know, we can just like address that sort of before we can start the agenda item. Yeah. Any questions about about this? Then public participation, like the first one, I wasn't even fully aware of, because it it rarely comes up. But uh comes up for city council all the time, you know, there's a public comment period on on y'all's agenda too. Uh, that is for everybody to speak with you about everything, so it's it's always on on the agenda. And in for the zoning board of appeals, it's limited to twenty one minutes. For city council, it's thirty minutes a ahead of like the the actual voting items and then unlimited time after. So you have twenty one minutes limited to three minutes each, so it could be seven people. If they are fast talkers, it could be more than seven people, but there's two caps, so like the twenty one minutes and then the three each. Um. The, um, thing that comes up more often is that pretty much every case that's before you is a public hearing. And public hearing comes with time to speak, uh, for people for and against the case. In you, in uh zoning board appeals meetings, that is set in the rules and procedures at ten minutes per side. So you have the staff presentation, you have the applicant's presentation, then you open the public hearing, uh, public hearing is ten minutes for people for. Ten minutes for people against, the, um. Technically, what you can do is wave, that that's what the, um. What the rules and procedures, uh, state is kind of that you can waive these requirements, but you can institute new ones as well, which is what you all typically do. Uh, where you give like an additional ten minutes, um. Yeah, if someone is a a very long talker, which we had recently here, but we have a lot at the planning commission. Um, that that's not the intent behind this, people are supposed to say their piece and they can say it, um. You know, graphically to help to help you all understand, but it isn't like a, we're not discussing philosophy here, right? We're discussing specific cases at the end of the day, so I think a time limit is very appropriate. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and it is, I think we we have in the past, sort of, um, this has happened from time to time. And the different boards have done it differently, and I think from time to time has happened in the past, um. Where the applicant's time was considered part of the, uh, part of the. Part of the pro, like the the people in favor, so and then you have sort of people saying things like, oh, I'd like to reserve my time. Uh, and then it's not ten minutes for people for, but it really is just like the remainder of the ten minutes for. That is done, that's not how our rules and procedures are, uh, are written out, that's, I know it happens. Um, but it really is, what it what it does is like the applicant presents. And then it really takes, doesn't allow for public comment, if they get to the end of the ten minutes. Then it would technically allow for no public comment in favor, which isn't the intent of the public hearing. So we we've talked about it internally and we've streamlined it for all of the the boards and commissions to do it the same way. And it's the same way the city council does it, where it's like the. They technically have no limit, yes. No, rule rules can be changed, um, um, so if if y'all are feeling sort of like, you know, make it as part of board comment. Um, I I'm not going to promise that that will change the rules based on that, because it's a discussion sort of. But we wanna have the same rules for all of our boards, um, but but. Make it known, kind of like how you would, how you would prefer to have it. And that's that. Yeah, and and it is appropriate, it certainly is appropriate, like if if something takes too long. If if someone, you know, from time to time, like public hearing technically is closed and then someone wants to speak. You know, it's that that the chair leads the meeting, uh, and the chair can remind people that the purpose of. Of the applicant's presentation, for instance, is not, um, it's not storytelling, it's not philosophy. It's to give the board a brief introduction into the project and provide. Uh, context and provide the, uh, reasons for for why a certain action was taken. That, uh, if if you all think something is too long in the, uh, for a specific individual, you can remind them to speed it up. And and you can give them like, ask them to wrap it up, that's that's entirely appropriate. Yeah, that's it's it's a fine line, I mean, it's always kind of like, it's a fine line to manage those meetings and there isn't a right or wrong. It requires sort of, we'll try to do it, uh, from time to time. Like if we notice that someone is just like talking loudly or like to keep to keep order, but it's, um. Yeah, I would say that's the the chair's burden, sort of like to identify sort of the right time to put a reminder to. The rules of the quorum for these meetings and to, um, sometimes you have, and. You know, I don't think we need to like tremendously overthink it, like some of the worst boards are the ones that take the the Roberts Rules entirely literal. And then you take away some of that given takes that, oh, but you but you get context from seeing. Um, what is going on, there's a bit more of a dialogue form, um, so. Yeah, it's not a exactly right or wrong way to do it, it certainly is like when it's beyond the pale. A reminder is certainly appropriate, um, and and then we're certainly, uh, helpful to to enforce kind of those. Those rules. Then summary in minutes, sort of like you'll see the minutes every time, um, posted, you don't really see the summaries. But we, um, we have two business days to make the summaries available, so how this works behind the scenes is that. Um, that's, you know, I'm taking notes of every action that's taken, so I can, um. I can create the summary minutes tomorrow morning, um, write it up, the summary minutes only, every action that was taken, who was present. And every action that was taken, the minutes you'll see are a bit more comprehensive, you know, where it provides a short summary of what someone said. Um, but the the summary we tend to publish sort of the the day after. Um, the minutes we make available after they're approved by zoning board of appeals. Cause they're really just in draft form up to that point, then they get approved. And, uh, making them available after the meeting, uh, the rules say, um. In no case later than immediately following the next regular meeting of the CBA, which is why we ask you all to vote on the minutes. Sort of either way, um, even if you weren't at the meeting before, because otherwise we'll never get the minutes approved with, um. Yeah, from my attendance standpoint, yeah. I think that was it, um, yeah. Yeah, I I hope, I hope it was somewhat helpful, um. But let let us know too, um. If there's any questions sort of from a procedural standpoint, um, this could be from a training standpoint, um. We could also go into what some of the. This could be from a training standpoint. Um, we could also go into what some of those. Um, you know, the variance criteria or so what that actually means. And that's. Not going to be quite as easy as like, there's no black or white, you know, that's that's really sort of um. Ambiguous and it's sort of good that it's ambiguous. Um, but anything that would be helpful, you know, anything. If you have questions about the the permitting, um, if you have questions about code enforcement, um, we can potentially get other people to come in and. Explain to y'all kind of like how those aspects function. Um, so let us know with any ideas. What what would be helpful? And then again, we're always available on the phone if anything comes up. Yeah. So it's, yeah, it's it's, we just had recently, we had uh, increases due to uh. The crier wanting more, wanting more for the ads and then the the company that puts the signs out. Um, really increasing their fees. Um, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars typically. It depends on how many variances you're applying for, how many requests, but the most common is seven hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah. And it used to be, but it's it it all kind of that. Yeah, it all leaves, it all leaves the city coffers immediately to like it, it comes in and it goes out. I think the actual fee that we keep is about two hundred dollars. Um, the rest of it goes through the the state mandated advertising processes.
Is that the same price as a permit for permits?
No.
Permitting, um, and I just know this because I have a a agenda item for the city council on Monday. Uh, permit fees tend to be for like a a residential project, tend to be in the. Four, four hundred um, through eight hundred for like a small addition and then for a new, a new like a million dollar house. It's about three, three and a half thousand.
Um, so you have a third party that puts those signs up?
Yeah.
Who, how, what is the rule to take them down? You know, we'll vote on a variance and it'll still be up like three, four months later.
Yeah, the the homeowner, the homeowner has to take him down if we, yeah.
Do they know that?
And and what if there's no?
Uh, the 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 applicant, technically it's the applicant. Um, the applicant has to take him down. Um, we put it, we put it on the approval letter, on every letter. It's like if you read it to the end, which I know many people don't. No, it's. And. No. Yeah. And for for many people, it's the the signs are not aesthetically pleasing. So many people will, the first moment they can will take him down, but. Yeah. Like.